Okay, I apologize, I wasn't able to minimize my screen when I was recording and I couldn't stop the video without minimizing my screen. So technically error, but I guess I learn every time I do something like this. So again, to go back to our peacemaking ceremony. Typically, this would be an evening where we would all be meeting in Mount Pleasant High School. We would be recognizing hundreds of students and then we would get to move into our board meeting on a very high note after that. So we know that obviously we cannot do that this year. We have invited our district employees to nominate students. Over the next couple of months, we will continue to honor and recognize those students that have been nominated for peacemaking awards this year. And we will plan to return to our typical format where we're able to recognize all everyone altogether in January of 2022. The next item on my report is a special education report. So I'd like to introduce to you as our special education supervisor Stephanie House. And Stephanie, I promise I'll be better with technology when I share your presentation.
Well, that's great news because I was thinking, hmm, I hope the screen share works. All right.
I just have to get out of this.
Let me move over.
Just give me one second, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Can you see it now?
All right, all right, well, good evening. Let me see here if I can figure out, I was doing this a different way than this. Jen, do you have to control the PowerPoint for me then? Okay. All right. All right, so let's get started with the first slide then. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the total number of students that we have receiving special education services currently. This gives you a five-year spread, so it starts back in 2016, 2021 school year to kind of give you an idea of where the numbers have been. We are definitely up this year. We're up about 46 students this current school year. And when I went back and looked at some of the data, I found it really interesting that about 16 of the 46 students have moved here from out of state. So it's about 35% of our increased numbers have come from people moving into Michigan. Why, I'm not really sure, but that I thought that was kind of an interesting piece of information. All right, next slide is talking about the programming that we have here. We have secondary resource rooms, which is one of the areas that we're seeing some increase in with our increased numbers of special ed. Elementary resource room. The behavior resource room, cognitively impaired classroom, all of those numbers seem to be relatively steady. Not seeing a huge increase or decrease in those at all. The next program would be the moderately cognitively impaired program, and that includes our community-based ed program or CBE. We work very closely with the RESD with this program in particular. Because the RESD, the GIRESD runs the Greshap program. And Mount Pleasant Public Schools runs the Isabella County programs for the moderate and the community-based ed. Those numbers again, pretty, pretty stable. The next set of columns there are speech only. And those would be students that qualify in the area of speech and language as their eligibility. Those numbers are up slightly as well. And then that final group there is the speech total and that number as well as up. But those numbers are speech, students receiving speech and language services that also have a program. So those, these numbers are included in all of those previous areas that I talked about. Okay. Current staff needs, so our numbers are up, our staff is down. This has been a trend that we've been seeing over the last few years as people are retiring. Or moving, they're getting married, moving away, taking new positions, we are having a hard time replacing them. So we're currently down about two and a half teachers actively looking. We're actually, the second one on there was the social worker, but we have just offered a position to a social worker and she's accepted pending board approval. So that one is hopefully filled. And then we are also down a speech and language pathologist. So if you know anyone out there in those areas looking, we would love to have you send them our direction. Paraprofessional staff, also, we're down, we're down about 14 paraprofessionals right now. That makes me a little nervous because we have a lot of students with a lot of needs. Safety needs, health needs, academic needs that really need those paraprofessionals to be there to support them. And we have postings up for those as well. Right now, we're managing okay because we still have a lot of students that are participating in Oilers Online. And so we're, we're able to manage currently. But as students start coming back, that's going to be an area that I'm going to be more concerned about. And we'll continue to push to try to get some people to apply for us. All right, virtual and face-to-face. This school year has been unique with all of the COVID adventure that we've been in. I've kind of split this into two groups, although they worked very closely as a team. The, the first half of the screen there is talking about the teachers and the ancillary staff. The ancillary staff includes our speech and language pathologists, our school social workers, our occupational therapists and our, and our physical therapists. They've all been working very hard on visual supports, virtual supports, sorry. Classroom level, small groups, individual sessions, doing a little bit of everything. They've done a lot of face-to-face tutoring and virtual tutoring when possible. Co-taught classes are happening at the middle school and the high school virtually or face-to-face. And we've also have our elementary providers providing push-in services even at the elementary level. They'll join in a Google Meet or wherever they can get in to see those kids. Social emotional supports have been critical, given what's been going on. So we're, we're providing the social emotional supports both in small groups and individually if the students need it individually. Trying to provide as much parent training as we possibly can for things such as therapy techniques, academic strategies and technology. The parents have been very much a team with the providers. Hanging in there with them, doing co-therapy sessions and things like that to make sure that their students are getting all of their needs met. Work site lessons are still happening in supervision for when we can go out to work sites. And if they can't go out, they're doing them here in the buildings. And then they've also been creating functional skill videos for those students that need that kind of support. The paraprofessionals have been also helping both virtually and face-to-face. They've been providing some tutoring, the help of accommodations such as reading tests, even through the screens. Social groups, functional skill videos, they've been helping to create those and, and share those with students. They have been phenomenal about doing deliveries for us as well. They've been helping with lunch distribution. They will deliver packets to homes that have transportation issues and can't get to, to the materials that their students need. And in that process, helping the parents and the students troubleshoot technology in the classroom work from afar. It's a lot of porch drops and talking through doors and, and windows, but they have been phenomenal. And then just keeping that communication open with the students and families. It's one more group of people that are jumping in there and making sure that, that we're staying connected and we're supporting in every way that we possibly can. And you know, as everyone knows, this has been a real tricky time. Especially with our students with a variety of needs, but I think they've been doing a great job and working really hard, so. All right, so a couple of initiatives that we've been working on or trying to work toward anyway. Are connected with Alt Shift and Alt Shift is a grant-funded group. It's funded through the Office of Special Ed. And we started getting involved with Alt Shift a couple of years ago, a few years ago now, with aided language input and literacy. And we have an implementation team that works very hard to kind of guide where that's going. We meet on a monthly basis with Alt Shift and actually GIRESD is also meeting with us now with that area. And we're, we're continuing to move forward, developing more literacy strategies for our students as well as augmentative communication. And providing professional development. This group organizes that professional development and helps to actually provide it for the staff. The other half of the screen there is talking about foundations of math. And that was supposed to be a new initiative for us this school year. We started in the summer with training. We trained our moderate and mild cognitively impaired teachers. And our research from teachers as well as all of the paraprofessionals that work with those classrooms. And our speech and language pathologists join that as well. And we did some training this summer, thinking that we would start up and running first thing in the fall. But then with everything shifting and being pretty much virtual, we decided it was too much, too much change, too much for the, the kids, for the staff. And that we wanted to put that on hold. So that will be starting up again here pretty soon. This implementation team will start meeting with the Alt Shift trainers in the next, I think it's the next month that we start again. And then we will put together our plan for how we're going to roll this out for next school year. So little, little bummed that we didn't get to do it this year, but we're excited for what's to come, so. Okay, transition. So we work very closely with many outside agencies. And the agency that we work with primarily for our transition programs is Michigan Rehab Services. And their whole focus is to take students from school to work. And right now, they have, we have 59 open cases with Michigan Rehab Services. They help with the funding and this distributing of the different, choosing which agencies can provide those kinds of services for our students. So under Michigan Rehab Services, we work very closely with Mid-Michigan Industries and with Disability Network. And those two agencies then provide things such as the Goles class that's up there about social media. That one's happening right now where they come in and they instruct students on social media and this, how to be safe on social media and what's appropriate and what's not. And how that could impact you in a work setting down the road and, and things like that. They also work on individual on-the-job experiences, so students get to actually go out and do jobs and they help with some coaching and, and things like that. Independent living assessments for those students that have some additional needs and need to find out if they can live independently or what kinds of supports they need. They also provide benefits counseling for our students. So we work very closely with them. They come to our IEP meetings and we make a plan for these students so that they can be as, as much of a part of the community and functioning in the work, in the work world as they possibly can. Now normally, we have some additional activities that happen. But all of these agencies right now are completely virtual. So it's kind of holding back some of our other opportunities such as visiting some of the, the universities, trade schools, the, the MCTI. Some of those places, which is the Michigan Career Technical Institute. We generally have kids that, that go and visit and they look at other opportunities and right now, we just can't do that. So we're hoping that if things open up a little bit more this spring, that we'll be able to bring some of that back in. So then we also have the work experiences that we provide ourselves with our, our programs. And these are connected to businesses right here in our community. And I'm going to name them off because I think it's important that we give them some, some kudos for all of the wonderful opportunities they're providing for our students. Some of them are Maury Courts, the Ice Arena, Rix, Mountain Town, Merchandise Outlet, Carpet One, the First Baptist Church, Rose Bush Manor, Taco Boy, Church of Christ, Cheers, and the Brass Cafe. Let me see, I think one, two, three, four, about five of those are new to us this year. So we're excited to have some new businesses that are joining us in this partnership. And helping these students to develop the skills that they need to be amazing employees when they're done. The other half of the screen is talking about My Power and My Power just started last year. This is a program that is connected with Michigan Rehab Services and the Greshap Isabella RESD. And it's, it's to provide students an opportunity to get into a business where they may end up trying out a position and being so good at that position that the business wants to hire them in that spot. So right now, our relationship is with McLaren Central Michigan. And we are very thankful that they were willing to take this on with us. There's three different areas that they work in at McLaren right now is the food service, the dish room and the food prep. And they do rotations in each of those areas. And like I said, the, the goal is to get them to the point where they're independent. And the businesses are interested in having them join them. And we have had some success between this program and the one that's in Greshap County with a handful of our kids getting hired. So that's exciting. We're currently working on a second My Power site. That's in process. We are actually having a meeting here in about two weeks to talk about that a little bit more with Mid-Michigan Industries. They're trying to organize that for us. And hopefully we'll get some more students out there and another opportunity that's a little different than the food service area so that the students can get a variety of, of different options, so. Okay, and then finally, I just wanted to mention the community, community agency relationships. These are some of the, the groups that we are involved with. We meet regularly. Most of them are at least monthly, some of them are twice a month. And it, this, this has been absolutely amazing because we're connected with CMH, DHHS, Isabella County Courts, Saginaw Chippewa Tribe, RISE, Mid-Michigan Industries, Isabella County Courts. I don't even know if, I think I might have already said that. There's so many agencies and it's been instrumental in us being able to make sure that our students and our families are connected to the resources that they need. For not only academics, but also for housing and just life in general. So this has been probably one of the most valuable groups of people that, that I've had the pleasure to work with. And I'm seeing great things for our students as a result. We're, we're working as a team and we're, we've got a, a target for where these kiddos are heading and help them to be a, a participant in our community. They're, they're here, they're ours. So that's pretty much it, that's kind of an overview. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. How do, how would a business go about getting involved with your program?
Great question. The best thing to do would be to call the Special Education Office and ask for me, Stephanie House. And we would be more than thrilled to add some more businesses to our list. We love the partnerships that we have with these businesses and like I said, they've been so phenomenal to work with. And it gives our students real-life experience. So yeah, call the Special Education Office. It's 775-2350. Ask for me and we will, we'll get something going.
Thank you for all of your hard work, Stephanie. Clearly a lot went into putting that report together.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
What kind of skills do you have to have to be a parapro? I seeing that we need a lot, how do we communicate out to the public what, what you have to have, what skill sets or how do you can get into a position like that?
Okay, so for starters, we are, parapros have to be highly qualified. So that means you have to have at least 60 credit hours. Or you have to pass a, it's called PRIETS for paraprofessionals, which is a test that you can take. If you fit into that area or you want to take the test and see if you pass that test. You just, you have to love children. You have to have some very good skills as far as patience and redirection and some of those kinds of things. We provide training for de-escalation and things like that if you happen to be with a group that has some behavioral struggles. Overall, you just need to, to be a real patient person and be willing to work real hard side by side a student.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you and your team does, it's quite impressive.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hi Stephanie, I had questions regarding the staff. And so I was wondering, you laid out the needs and I wondered, I, I'm trying to get an idea of the size of the, of, of, of the special ed. And so how many staff members are currently there roughly? It doesn't have to be exact.
Approximately 50, give or take a couple, yeah.
And that doesn't include the paraprofessional, right?
No, no, there's about 63 parapros, I think normally. And like I said, we're down about 14. Yeah.
Thank you, that helps. And then the second thing I wanted to ask is how can we help support what you guys do?
Oh. Well, that's a very good question, let me think about that one. To be really honest with you, I, we, I really feel like we get a lot of support. You know, I really do. I don't know what I would ask you to do or ask for any different than what we currently have. Our, our biggest issue is keeping our staff and there's not a lot that, that you can do for, for us on that. So really, I, right now, I can't think of anything. I'll think on that, if, if something pops into my head, I will definitely let you know. But right now, I, I think, you know, Jennifer in the board, you've allowed us to go out and go out into the community and start really connecting with these outside agencies. And really giving us the opportunity to spread our wings in whichever way we need to spread them to try to improve programs and, and opportunities for kids. So I, I think if you just continue to do that, that's fabulous, that, that's great. And if anything comes to mind, I will, I will definitely let you know. Thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Okay.
I, I have one more. I wondered, so I'm trying same thing to wrap my head around how this works. So when you have an increase, so you have a significant increase this year, right? There was 40-plus students. Does that also match the increase in funding that you receive? Is that by enrollment or is that different?
So, um, yes, it's just like it would be for any other students. So the increase in number of students means more money coming into the district. But it may not change necessarily the special ed funding per se. The funding is for student funding still.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just think one thing I want to add that Stephanie mentioned, but I, I don't know that she fully tutored her own horn on this. Stephanie is an invaluable partner to the RESD. And I know that, you know, we're really fortunate that we get to work so closely with Marty Combs and with all the programs that he does. But I know in talking with Marty and on the advisory board that Stephanie serves on and on the oversight committee that I serve on. They really rely on the expertise of Stephanie and her staff when making decisions for students. I think they're very grateful to our district for our ability to step up and take challenging students and embrace them. And know that just like Stephanie said, they're our students, they're part of our community and we want them to be as successful as possible. So I, I think you've really done a great job, Steph, of, of making those relationships much, much stronger over the years. So I'm very grateful for that, too.
Thank you, yeah, it's quite a team effort. We definitely, we talk every day. So yeah, thanks Jen, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you Stephanie. I will move on, just a couple other things on my report. I did want to make sure that everyone noted after our last organizational meeting, when I went to put our meeting dates in my calendar. Deb and I had made an error and that we did actually schedule a meeting accidentally on Labor Day. So we're thinking people probably don't want to meet on Labor Day. So we'll move that meeting from September 6th to Tuesday, September 7th. So just a note on the original list that we gave you and Deb's already adjusted all the paperwork and the meeting posting. But we wanted to make sure to bring that to your attention. The other thing I wanted to be sure to share with you all is information regarding the MESB Winter Institute. I believe that Deb has already shared that. I know several of you have registered for classes. If there is any class that's scheduled that you're interested in attending, if you just connect with Deb, she'll get you all registered for it. And we should be good to go. So we definitely want you to investigate whatever classes you're interested in and be sure to enroll in those if needed. So she'll help you take care of all of that, too. And that is all I have for my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next is the requested financial report.
Good evening. I have for you tonight the requested financial reports for our general fund and our special service funds comparing revenue and expenditure actual to budget for the month ending December 2019 and December 2020. And it's coming right up. I know you do all have these reports in your drive too, so I'm just going to go ahead and move forward. The general fund budgets have been updated to reflect the budgets that were approved at our last board meeting. So revenue currently is at 20% of budget this year compared to 28% last year. And expenditures are at 39% of budget this year compared to 35% last year. For our special service funds, athletics revenue is at 0% this year compared to 11% last year. And expenditures are at a negative 8% this year compared to a 9% last year. Clearly expenditures in the negative is very odd. That is a refund from PCMI coaching expense that actually happened in the 2019, 2020 school year that we just were refunded this year. So we have to reflect it on our books this year. That will be adjusted at the end of the year, as you know, this athletics fund is self-sustaining. So we do bill hockey at the end of the year for the total amount of their expenditures. So we would just bill them less this year since they paid more last year. It will all wash out in the end. But I wanted to make sure to explain that negative expenditure. Children's Learning Center revenue is at 61% of budget this year compared to 55% last year. And expenditures are at 43% both years. For the nurse testing program, again, we've just got a small fund balance we're spending down, so there's no revenue. Expenditures are currently at 1% of budget this year compared to 3% last year. Food service program revenue is at 25% of budget this year compared to 29% last year. And expenditures are at 32% both years. And for the school store revenue is at, currently at 22% of budget this year compared to 72% last year. And expenditures are at 19% this year compared to 42% last year. For the treasures report. For general fund, we had a cash balance on November 30th of $3.9 million. This is the wrong month, Jen, I apologize, we must have sent you the wrong month or it must have been printed incorrectly. For December, we had a beginning cash balance on November 30th of $3.9 million. We had receipts in the month of December of $3.2 million and disbursements of $4.8 million. That brings us a balance on December 31st in our general fund of $2.3 million. We know this is the time of year when we have to closely watch cash flow and I think we are going to squeak by. Hopefully this year, it's a little too early to, to say that, but we're watching it closely. For the debt retirement fund, on November 30th, we had a cash balance of $900,000. We had receipts in the month of December of $227,000 and dispersments of $184,000. That brings us a balance on December 31st of $957,000. That balance will continue to grow as we get more tax money in. And then we will have the big payment out in April, May time to spend on, on those debt payments. And for the capital projects fund, on November 30th, we had a cash balance of $2.8 million. We had a small amount of interest income, $99 in the month of December and dispersments of $16,000. That brings us a balance on December 31st of $2.8 million. I apologize for that report again. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have correspondence. At this time has, I believe all the correspondence has been sent out to the, the board. Jen, was there anything we needed to say about the Isabella County Human Rights Committee or anything from there? I know everybody received that as well.
Yeah, so we did receive a letter from the Isabella County Human Rights Committee. And there was a follow-up correspondence, I believe, from the letter that the board signed back in June. And really just asking to get involved with our school board, become, you know, active members of our district. And also looking at ways that they would encourage us to continue bridging the gaps in our communities. So, you know, I think one important piece of correspondence back to them is to let them know that, you know, we have appointed the, we have created the position that's an ex officio representative between the school district and the tribe. And that we continue to make strives in, in those issues in our community. So I don't know if a board member I don't know if a board member wants to officially respond to the Isabella Human Rights Committee, if, if someone wants to write a letter in response or how we want to move forward. But my take on that was that their letter was in response to your statement that was read back in June.
All right.
Thank you. I'm sorry, hi. Um, I agree that creating that ex officio position for a member of the Sagamaw Chippewa Indian Tribe is a big step forward. Um, this letter was largely talking about, uh, our, you know, making conscious steps to, um, be, let's see, racially literate about, um, indigenous people within our schools. I'm, I do feel like I would like us to maybe talk about some next steps, even if that's just keeping open line of communication with the, uh, I'm sorry, the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, and, and we can certainly do that. Over the course of the last ten years, we've sent a wide variety of ministers, of administrators and school staff to different meetings and functions that the Human Rights Committee has had, and we've been actively involved. So, this letter was specifically addressed to the board, so I could certainly craft a response and share that with you all, or if someone wanted to respond to them, we could do that, too. That would be whatever you prefer. But I, I agree that there, this is, to me, this feels like the start of an imitation for ongoing dialogue.
Yeah, and I, I, I totally agree with Jessica that, um, it's a great start to have someone from Sagamaw Chippewa Indian Tribe as an ex officio. I think it's very important that we map out farther, further steps. What are we gonna do next? How are we gonna stay involved? Do we actually put a member, um, not on their board, but actually, do we attend meetings on a rotating basis or one person that might want to take that on? But I think it's really, really important. And I, I think it was a huge step to, to create that position of ex officio. How can we then, instead of just having, um, our community come to us? How can we go out to them, um, to make sure that it's reciprocal?
And so maybe that's a great question for our ex officio member. The tribal council has appointed Alice Jo Ricketts. She's a tribal chaplain, and Alice Jo will be joining our meetings. So that might be a great question to pose to her. What, what can we do to further outreach and to build that relationship? I, I don't want to impose ourselves upon them, right? And I know their meeting structure is different than ours where it's not an open meeting and that sort of thing. So for, I would be really interested in her perspective as to how she thinks we could best move forward and continue to go even further than just this position.
That sounds great. Thank you.
I agree, and I think that, you know, along with the letter, uh, addressing the curriculum to me is how I read what they sent us. Um, to, it was a big component. And that is something that could be discussed at the curriculum committee, um, within our school district. And so that would be to me, the, a, a very logical next step. Um, is anyone in the board interested in, in drafting a response? I mean, I'm, I'm happy to participate. I think it'd be good to be a joined effort.
I, I'd be willing to, uh, create a draft and partner with whoever wants to partner with.
I'll be happy to help.
Okay. I'll take that.
Thanks, Jessica.
And I think, um, Linda could also probably add comments regarding, um, our social studies curriculum's, social studies curriculum study process, which I believe we're sort of in the middle of right now, looking at, um, being really intentional about teaching, um, Native American history and culture and, and that sort of thing.
We've definitely brought that up at P S C. Um, as you know, we're studying the social studies review at, at this moment, and, um, there's a online free program, I think I shared that last time, called the Open Book Project, and there are some excellent units that are, you know, that we don't want to just touch on. We want to make sure it's an active part of our pacing guide and really intentionally teach some of those accurate units that, um, the Michigan Department of Education has, has recommended for students at various grade levels.
Thank you, Linda. So perhaps maybe Jessica and Wayleen, if you want to collaborate on a lot of responses and share that with the board, we can move forward from there. Does that sound okay?
That sounds great.
Thank you.
That sounds, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Linda? When, when you do that on the curriculum board, do people from the tribe have input as to what you bring in? I'd be interested in, and, I mean, it's a good thing for us to think that this is what's relevant, needs to be taught. But what do they think is relevant and needs to be taught? And that, to me, would be more important than what the Department of Education thinks, but more of what the tribe thinks needs to be taught. And is that being taken into account?
If I remember correctly, um, Melissa Isaac was, um, kind of involved in that process. So I'd love to touch base with her again, but, um, I, I, I feel like she is very aware of the creation of, of these, these units. And they were, you know, developed specifically with indigenous populations in mind and created by them. But, but I would be happy to make sure that she is actively involved in that process as well.
Was there anything else surrounding that? Okay, next, and moving on to the consent agenda and the approval of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one organizational meeting. And, uh, can we do the regular meeting all in? Okay. And the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting as well?
You can also do the bills. Everything on the consent agenda can go at once.
Okay, wonderful. So then also the, um, approval of bills. Thank you.
Motion.
Second. So moved. Sheila? Second, Dana.
Courtney, can you do roll call?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pangle?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, next on the agenda is new business, uh, starting with retirements.
Yes, we would, um, sadly like to have the board approve the retirement of Kim O'Boyle. Kim has been with our district several years. Um, she's been, probably our main health teacher, and she also has been, um, you, the board has got to know her well because she's been a key player on our sex ed advisory board. And her retirement date is coming at the end of Tri Two, so, um, it's coming rather soon at the beginning of March.
That we accept the retirement of Ms. Kim O'Boyle with great regrets, but hopes of great fun and excitement in the future.
Absolutely. Is there, um, motion? We need to do a motion for that, correct? Yes, okay. Is there a motion to accept the retirement of Kim O'Boyle?
I move that we accept the retirement of Kim O'Boyle.
Second, Sweeten.
Roll call, Courtney?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pangle?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes. Unanimously passes, and thank you very much for your years of service. Okay, next is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Extension.
This is a little bit of a unique situation that we found ourselves in. So in your, um, board packet this evening, you have a memorandum from me, and then you have a series of letters of agreement. In December, um, as part of the Consolidated Appropriations Act, Congress gave the option to employers to extend the, uh, Family First Coronavirus Response Act through March thirty-first. And that basically means that employees have up to ten days or up to eighty hours of leave based on being, um, exposed or testing positive for COVID-nineteen. That doesn't impact their personal time, uh, or their sick time that they already have given to them as a benefit. We would like to extend that offer to our employees, and it's, it's a rollover offer. So what that means is that if you have an employee that's already used five days of leave in the fall, they only have five additional days to use between now and March thirty-first. So we're not resetting where everyone gets ten additional days. What's unique about this is because it is a benefit, we do have, have to negotiate that benefit with all of our bargained groups. We also have to offer them a letter of agreement. It would be unlikely, I would think, that they would turn it down, but, um, our legal advice was to move forward and to make sure we have negotiated that. So, uh, you have, uh, in your packet, letters of agreement that we've created for all of our affiliated or organized groups. So the Mount Pleasant Administrators Association, the Mount Pleasant Education Association, the Mount Pleasant Support Personnel Association, the Mount Pleasant Transportation Association, the Mount Pleasant Community Education Association. We are able to offer this to all of our at-will employees additionally without bargaining anything with them because they don't have a group that represents them. So today, we're working through the process, um, with different groups. Um, we do have a tentative agreement. Um, well, actually, I should say, we do have a ratified agreement that they have voted on with the Administrators Association. The, uh, Education Association, which is the teachers, they have tentatively agreed to that. The Support Personnel Association has tentatively, tentatively agreed to it, and they did vote and ratify that. The Transportation Association has tentatively agreed to it. And the Community Education Association has tentatively agreed to it. So what we're asking for you to do this evening is to approve the offer of the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act for all district employees pending their ratification, knowing that everyone's out at, everyone else is at different spots. If we do one approval this evening pending their ratification, we'll be able to put that into effect as soon as their groups are able to vote on it. This coverage is retroactive to January first. And again, it goes through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. So there shouldn't be any laps in coverage for our employees.
Okay. So you're asking for us to vote on that tonight, then?
Yeah, I would just say on, on the memo that you have in your board packet, there's a recommendation. If you use that recommendation at the bottom of the memo as the basis for your motion, I believe that would approve all of the letters of agreement. Um, and it would be a roll call vote because of the virtual environment, and so that would count for ratification vote.
Okay, so I believe what you're saying is the, so making a motion for the consolidation, um, appropriation of Act two thousand twenty-one, published number one sixteen, two sixty, signed into law on December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, contains the COVID-related Tax Relief Act two thousand twenty, Tax Relief Act that allows employers the option of extending the paid leave provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, F F C R A through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The new law gives discretion to employees to extend the benefit through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, so that employees may carry over and continue to use any unused leave act. Therefore, the Mount Pleasant Public Schools will extend the paid leave provisions of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one for members of the Mount Pleasant Community Education. All right, is there, um, uh, an approval or, uh, for the, um, or I guess a first or a second for, uh, that act, for the approval of that?
I move that we approve the recommendation.
Seconded, Jessica.
Okay, roll call vote then, Courtney?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pangle?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Um, next, thank you. Next is the Neola Policies, the second reading and the adoption for a policy.
We have one agenda item in between there. Um, Agenda Item C, that is the Education Foundation Representative. Um, as you remember, at our board meeting, our organizational meeting, we forgot to appoint a board member to a representative for the foundation. So, um, we do need a board member to represent us on the foundation board. It is a non-voting member. It's a two-year appointment. And Amy has most recently served in this position. I think Sheila, you did a term also, and I know Tim also did one or two terms on this board. So, uh, we just need, uh, a nomination for a representative to the Mount Pleasant Education Foundation.
I'd be interested in serving on this board.
I move that we appoint William Pangle to the, um, Mount Pleasant Public Education Foundation Board.
I'll second. Sheila?
Roll call?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pangle?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Wayleen. Thank you, Jennifer, too. Um, so next is the Neola Policies, the second reading and the adoption.
Okay, yes, um, as we discussed last time, these Neola Policies are recommended by our, um, Neola representative, Greg Webster. Policies six one one four and six three two five are both, um, cost principle and spending federal funds revised principles. They're all based on federal law, and we were, it was recommended that we take it as prepared and as written. Policy six three two five, pure procurement of federal funds, was revised a little. But again, this was recommended and a part of federal law, and Neola recommends that we, um, follow these revisions.
Thank you. Okay, so is there, um, a motion to accept Policy six one one four and Policy six three two five?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so Jessica first, Sheila second? Okay, roll call, Courtney?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk? You're muted, Tim.
Yes.
William Pangle?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes. All right, that unanimously passes. Um, next is the Extended COVID-nineteen Learning Plan. I think, John, you were gonna talk to that?
Absolutely. So we do have quite a bit of information, and I have, um, variety of different, uh, district staff members that are here with us this evening that are going to help share the, this presentation. Okay. We'll see how this goes. Maybe it'll be a little bit smoother than, than the other technology pieces. So, uh, this evening, we are going to follow and go through parts of the Return to School Plan that are required by law. Um, and so again, just to revisit, um, back in September, there were three new pieces of legislation that, um, were created in order to guide schools as we return to school, given the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And the plan has three basic parts. First was to establish and review educational goals and then an extended learning plan. Second was to review a progress report by February first. That'll be part of our presentation this evening. And then once again, we review a progress report before the last day of school, and that is progress towards our goals. And then the next is to hold monthly reconfirmation meetings, and you all know that we've been doing that since, uh, this process started. So tonight, we're going to look at our reconfirmation meeting report. We're looking at data from Power School for four weeks worth of data. It is a little bit awkward because during the four weeks, um, we did include winter break, so we are not looking at a complete, um, consecutive month. The system that we've established is that teachers have until Wednesday of the next week to enter their data. of the next week to enter their data. So some of the data from this last week could be a little bit lacking. One of the interesting things about this report is that this report includes three weeks of time when students were solely in virtual instruction, and then one week of time last week where students were in a combination of face-to-face or virtual instruction. So I will pull this report up. Zoom in a little bit so we can see it here. So again, we're looking first at reconfirmation time from December 7th through January 15th. And this is being reviewed at our board meeting this evening. After your review, it will be posted on our district's website in the Transparency and Reporting section. We're reconfirming how, how instruction is being delivered. So you can see in the bold section, I've indicated the period of time where we were completely virtual from November 16th through January 8th. And then, excuse me, beginning on January 11th, I've outlined for all different grade levels, the options of instruction that we have, whether that's face-to-face or virtual, our goals as far as ending blended rosters, and then additional information regarding our COVID protocols that are in place. That's for the elementary level. At the secondary level, we're looking at, beginning on January 11th, where we are remaining in the cohort model at the middle school, where students have a shortened day that's focused on core instruction. And they do have the choice of choosing fully online or face-to-face. And lunch is offered free for all students. Every Wednesday during the second trimester is a day of virtual learning. Although because of when we went completely virtual, actually, last Wednesday was the first Wednesday they had that was a virtual learning. And then again, moving on to ninth through 12th grade, beginning January 11th, where Mount Pleasant High School and G.I. Tech will maintain a hybrid model through the second trimester, where students are attending classes face-to-face two days a week and are virtual three days a week. All students are virtual on Wednesdays, and our COVID protocols remain in place. This is where I'll document public comments. And then we get into the two-way interaction rates for developmental kindergarten through second grade. So when you look at these rates, and you'll see the first three weeks, the not 100% remote is not applicable because during those three weeks, we were 100% remote for all students. So you can see our documentation of two-way communication was slightly stronger at the beginning of the month, dipped a little bit, and then has been strong again. Last week, all students averaged out to be 93%, with 86% being our fully remote students and 100% being our students that were face-to-face. And then we'll examine the same information for our third through fifth grade students. Again, you'll see comparable numbers, where you know, we're really expecting those percentiles to be in the 90th percentile. A little bit lower here for this last week, but we do know that we do still have teachers that are putting information in. So this is what was recorded and what Joe was able to pull off of Power School this afternoon. Looking again then now at middle school rates. Again, high rates of connection. We have to remember too that the state specifies what counts as two-way communication. So it's not simply our outreach to students. It is our outreach and then their response. And then finally, we'll go down to ninth through 12th grade. You notice there that this last week is quite low. And what's happened historically is that when I shared this information at a board meeting, within two days, when we give them the deadline of putting all the information in, those rates increased significantly as they have the opportunity to actually put that information in. So I'll move back here to my presentation. We'll keep going through this information if that's okay, and then we'll do questions at the end. So the next part of what we want to look at and what we want to talk about this evening is the Benchmark Data Report. And this information is slightly different. So part of the Return to Learn legislation, when I say it's different, I mean that it's not information that we've looked at previously. Part of the requirement from MDE is that we do complete benchmark testing three times a year and we report on that progress. The goal sheets that we set up for our benchmark testing was that all students would show improvement through the NWEA on reading and math. And that's all students from kindergarten through eighth grade. Students are tested three times a year, once in the fall, once in the winter, which we started that testing process this week, and then again in the spring. And this evening, I have here with, with us Joyce Castillon, who is our Instructional Technology Coach, and Diane Falsetta, who's the principal at Poland Elementary, to talk a little bit more about NWEA data. Excuse me. So I'm going to move into, Joyce, to your PowerPoint. And if you want to walk through this, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. Jen, thanks for having me. First of all, that's the very end slide here. I put on here just some resources that were for families or information of the norms. There we go.
I promise I'm normally better with technology. I apologize.
I'm not that far away. I can come down there and run it, right down the hall.
I apologize. I apologize, too. I don't have any video today. I think I grabbed a student Chromebook, so I'll, I'll do my best to. Joyce is trying to troubleshoot, so I apologize for that. Speaking of tech, technology issues.
Okay, we can go to the next one here. All right, so the first slide that I have is just data that I compiled from the NWEA system. This is broken down. It looks like a lot of numbers. And I've got some graphs, some charts that'll be a better visual. So I have this one broken down by grade level. How many students were tested? The next column is the national norm RIT. So that means our NWEA test, let me back up for a second. The NWEA is an assessment that we use for kindergarten through eighth grade. And we test math and reading three times a year, like Jen said. It's an adaptive test, so this test will start out and meet a student at their level. So if a student's answering questions correctly, the questions will get harder. If they answer incorrectly, the levels drop back and ask easier questions with the idea of finding their instructional level, no matter what grade level they're working at. And then we get, as teachers, we get very detailed reports of the skills that they're strong, that need work, or that they're ready to learn. So the norm RIT is kind of the baseline score across millions of kids that are tested. And that is where the students normally fall at the beginning of kindergarten, the beginning of first, or whatever grade it is. So I have one column on here. For the national norm RIT, let's say kindergarten is 140. Our district mean RIT for the fall was 146. So we're a little bit higher for kindergarten. The number of students at or above the district mean was 104, or 44% of the 239 kids that were tested. And then 74% of our students were at or above the national norm. And I did that for all the grade levels, math on one side, reading on the other side. Anybody? Jen, Diane, do you have anything to add on that one? No?
No, they were, the, the national norm, the RIT scores were adjusted a little bit this fall, correct?
Yes.
To take into consideration the, the lack of face-to-face schooling or...
No, they adjust the norms every so many years and put out new norms based on student testing activity. And this just happened to be the year that the new ones came out.
Okay, I noticed they dropped a little bit.
Yep. This chart shows a breakdown of our subgroups. In order for me to get reads and percentages of subgroup breakdown, there has to be a certain number of the population. So here are just some of the ones that were, I was able to pull reports on. I use the illuminate data hub system for this report, and I just kind of broke it down, math and reading again, the total number of students kindergarten through eighth grade that tested. Obviously, it doesn't represent the entire population. We did have a number of students that did not test. But the ones that did, there, you can see the breakdown here. How many students were classified as economically disadvantaged, special ed, male, female, Native American, white, black, or African American, Hispanic or Latino, the remote, which would be the Oilers online, and the face-to-face. And then I just put percentages of the number of that subgroup, how many were at or above the 40th percentile on their test. So that's right around grade level or above.
I just wanted to add too that I think it's important to note that these categories for reporting were given to us by MDE. So this is how we do have to report the data. The breakdown by grade level, we felt like that's important to us, and we'll be reporting that as well. But these specific categories were what we have to report as part of the Return to Learn legislation.
All right, this is just a visual of the same data that we were just looking at through math and reading on the same slide here. So we've got grade level at or above the national norm RIT score. So you can see each grade level across the bottom and the percentage of the students that were at or above grade level of the 40th percentile for math and reading. And that's all buildings. This one is just kind of a snapshot of reading and same kind of thing. This is just the number, though. Instead of a percent, these are the numbers for this count of students based on each of these subgroups. And there's reading and math. So the colored bar is the total number of students in that category. And then the gray bar next to it is how many scored at or above the 40th percentile. This is kind of a breakdown of what our population looked like of the students that tested. I kind of grouped the 15%, the Asian Pacific Islander, Islander, and the unknown or not specified category together. But this kind of just gives you a representation of what our population looks like. And this is a breakdown of the reading subgroups scoring at or above the 40th percentile. So as a percentage instead of the actual number. Subgroups, again, for math, just a percent, percentage instead of the numbers. Okay, this one is, shows math and reading, and this is the breakdown of some of the subcategories. Again, just a closer look. I know when they're all stacked up together, it's hard sometimes to look at what they look like up close. So here just shows the student count with the blue bar, and then the number at or above the 40th percentile, along with the percentage, right next to it. And I just went through, you could probably, the next slide is special education students. The next one is by gender. So we've got math and reading, male and female, remote students, and face-to-face. And then here, these two links, the first one is just a family guide to math growth. And that just shows us, it's a handout that can be shared with families. I believe I have it on our website someplace. But it kind of explains what NWEA is, how it works, how students are tested, what's measured, and talks a little bit about student growth. And the last link that I put on there is the norms data. Did I put the same link on there twice? The last one is just the norms data and what each grade level looks like at different times of the year and what a year's growth looks like for each student is different because it's based on their individual score. Instead of all second graders need to be at a certain point, it's whatever is characterized as a year's growth for this individual student.
So Joyce, I'll update that link. I will share that with the board, too.
Yep, I will get on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So again, in your presentation, you do have the graphs that Joyce just presented, and we'll make sure you have the other slide deck as well. Moving on with the information in our Return to School report, just some general updates and some general information. We really believe that the return to school, the return to face-to-face learning has gone well over the last week. As I've stated many times, safety continues to be a top priority for us. Our COVID protocols are firmly in place. All of our buildings spent a lot of time last week teaching and reteaching those expectations that our students have forgotten, you know, while they were in a virtual setting. You know, we're still requiring masks at all times for all grade levels. Classrooms have an extra level of disinfecting every four hours. Buildings are deep cleaned using the electrostatic cleaners on a regular basis. And our bus protocols remain the same. We continue to have excellent support for our at-risk and special education students, whether they're online, or I'm sorry, whether they're virtual or face-to-face. And we have smaller class sizes because of the number of students that are virtual, which allows for more space in the classroom. Our families are still screening students when they leave for school. And we really feel like our instructional models are working. I've been sharing with you once a month, just a snapshot of where our current cases are. So you can see where we were on November 16th, which is when we made the decision to move to virtual. You can see where we were on December 14th, and then where we are today. Our active student cases, our students in quarantine, active staff cases, and then staff members in quarantine. Last week, Governor Whitmer and the Michigan Department of DHHS did make an extension to the epidemic order that does have some impact on schools. It did update mainly our athletic information, where the start of non-contact sports, well, the start of contact sports, I should say, was delayed. Those sports would be basketball, wrestling, cheer. They are allowed to hold non-contact practices between now and February 1st, and their competition would begin after that time. Non-contact sports like ski and bowling can continue. The other interesting part of the updated guidance from last week was that Governor Whitmer made a plea to recommend to schools that all schools offer some form of face-to-face instruction by March 1st. Along with that, I think the idea was that we offer options for families. And they provided some updated guidance for schools that are additional safety protocols. When I was able to review the safety protocols, I felt really good about where our district is and the processes that we already have in place. So first, they asked that you designate a COVID-19 point of contact. I believe that you all know that we have a Mount Pleasant Public Schools COVID team, where we have one person assigned for staff issues, one person assigned for student issues, and two administrators, myself and Linda, that work closely with our COVID team every day. Cohorting when possible. We've been cohorting in the middle school all year, and even our elementary buildings cohort when they keep classes together so that multiple classes... so that multiple classes aren't interacting with one another. It's always just one or two classes together. Use of personal protective equipment, we've been very rigid there. Practicing good hygiene, we've been practicing and reinforcing daily how to wash our hands, how to spend the amount of time that we need to do that. Spacing and movement, so making sure that when we do have movement in the buildings, it's organized, it's focused, it's not chaotic. Looking at ventilation, you know, we've spent a lot of time studying our ventilation and we'll continue to do that over the next several weeks. We do a daily screening of staff and students. We have a fast response to positive test results. Our food service, athletic and extracurricular activities are all very controlled and very monitored at this point. And we have regular cleaning of shared surfaces and objects. And that is, that does go along with our partnership with Grand Rapids Building Services so that we're offering additional support there. I think it's really important to highlight the progress that we've been making and the partnerships in our community that I believe are so critical. And the one that I'm most proud of right now and most excited about is our partnership with the Central Michigan District Health Department. As you all know, we were thrilled to be a part of a vaccine clinic that they hosted last Thursday. They specifically invited Mount Pleasant Public School staff members to the clinic. And we're thrilled to say that we, to the best of my knowledge, we were able to vaccine 218 of our staff members. Those are staff members that received the first vaccine. There will be a second round of vaccines scheduled for that group for February 4th. Late this afternoon, I received information that our staff has been invited to a second vaccine clinic that will be held tomorrow. So we're making arrangements for as many staff members as possible to be able to go to that. On a, on a regular basis, our district has right around 450 employees. And just about 330 of our employees have indicated that they are, they want to get the vaccine. So I think 218 is an excellent start and we'll look to continue adding to that. We are making plans and arrangements for the second round of vaccines knowing that it is more common to have adverse side effects from the second round. So we'll make sure that we're prepared when our staff members go through that. But we are so incredibly grateful for the clinics that we have been invited to. And I think anyone that would share their experiences would say that the clinic on Thursday was a well-oiled machine. It was impressive and we're just really grateful to be a part of that. My recommendation for us moving forward is that we continue to offer the instructional models that we're currently offering. We're giving families a choice, which is an important part of this process. I know that sometimes it doesn't always feel like it's the best choice. But again, we're trying to make the best of the situation that we're in currently. We believe to continue using the models that we have moving forward based on the review of our data and also looking at recommendations from the Central Michigan District Health Department and M D H H S. While we're offering face to face and virtual instruction, we continue to revisit key parts. We continue to look at our hybrid and cohort models and look at how we are managing those models and if there are things we could do better. We continue to look at air quality in our buildings. Josh and his staff are measuring air quality in different spots of the buildings periodically. They'll be here with us in February to report on that again. Our food service programs, we're looking at the number of students that are taking breakfast and lunch, whether they're in a face to face program or a virtual program. We're looking at how we can improve that so that more families are getting the meals that we know they need. We're looking at our daily routines. Are we crossing paths with students too often? What can we do to make sure that we're keeping our environment more protected so that we aren't intermingling groups? We're also discussing the need for a virtual day at the elementary level. That was brought up at our last board meeting. Back in November, we talked about looking at that and deciding, is there a need for perhaps one day a month to have a virtual day at the elementary level? And I think we're still undecided on that point this evening. One of the things we have to remember is that based on the experience that we just had from November until last week in a virtual model, it works and it's successful if every student has access to technology. If we were to go virtual for one day for our K-5 students, they wouldn't necessarily have the technology that they need. The need for a virtual day was also discussed as a need to help teachers manage blended rosters, look at large class sizes. And all those issues have been resolved as we've moved into second trimester. So I'm not saying one way or another, at this point, we're still working with our administrators and our teachers to determine what the best course will be for that. Moving forward, we need to start looking at what our plans are for third trimester. We're really only about six weeks away from the start of the third trimester. So we need to go back to our families, tell them what programs we plan to offer, the instructional models that we plan to offer and ask them to make a commitment, which would essentially go from the beginning of March through the end of the school year. And during our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about social emotional support that is offered. And I've got a wide variety of lists here of programs that we have offered. But I also invited Courtney Russell to join us this evening. Courtney is an at-risk counselor at Mount Pleasant Middle School. So what you see on the screen before you is a list of all the different social emotional supports offered both virtual and face to face at the elementary buildings. The next slide breaks down the programming that's offered at the middle school. And I asked Courtney just to share a little bit more about what they're doing and some special programs that they have. So Courtney, if you would jump in, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm happy to talk about some of the programming that we are offering here at Mount Pleasant Middle School to offer social emotional support to both our face to face students and our virtual students. We have a weekly schedule that Jenna is sharing with you right now. We continue to offer one-on-one counseling, social emotional sessions with students either face to face and socially distant or students can make an appointment to do one virtually with us. So that, that would be like a typical counseling session that we would have in a typical school year. But we also saw a need for a lot of extra outreach opportunities to our students. One thing that we do is we do have a Google Classroom where each week we post our second step lesson, which is our district K through eight social emotional curriculum. Typically, that would be presented in our advisory classes. But with our cohort model, we do not have advisory this year. And so we thought it was still very important to get that content out to our students. So that is posted every Monday morning. And that is an online platform that myself and my colleagues, Annalee Spacks and Stephen Wheeler, we record the lesson and then post the worksheet that accompanies it. And we just, we really encourage students to follow along with our discussion on our video and then to complete the worksheet. And we also incentivize it a little bit, which is nice. So those students who turn in their completed worksheet go into a drawing for a $10 gift card to a local business. So it's kind of fun just to reach out and say, hey, this isn't required, but it's really good for you. And these are really important things to be thinking about and be talking about. And so we certainly appreciate their participation. And we've been really, really impressed with the amount of participation we've had from our students. Because a lot of times with our students, if it's not required, you're not really sure how it's going to go. But we've had a really, really good turnout for that. So we've been really happy with that. Every day we have some sort of social gathering that is available. So you'll see on our schedule, you'll either see Kick It or Lunch Bunch. And those are opportunities for students just to gather. There is a counselor present that is supervising. Sometimes it's counselor-led and that will play a game or have conversation starters. One week I did a craft with some students. Mr. Wheeler will host different like gym kits and jam boards, things like that. But it's really just a place for kids to come with no other agenda than to just hang out, to see each other's faces, to talk, to communicate, to laugh. So we have a lot of fun with that. We have established an Euler Pride Club, which is for students who want to be allies to our LGBTQ A population or just to learn more about that community and how they can better support that community. We have a book club. So through our Project Aware Grant, we were really lucky that we were able to purchase a lot of books for resource libraries. And Ms. Fox has taken one of those books and she is offering a book group once a week where they get together. If the students want, they can get on early and she reads it with them or they can jump on a little bit later and just have a nice discussion. We continue to have mindfulness. Laura Gorley joined us for that. And now that we're back, that she's back full-time face to face, Rita Damari is joining us for that. We offer twice a week study skills groups to help students learn about Power School, how to check their grades, different organizational strategies, ways to build their binder so that they're better organized for class, how to keep track of assignments in Google Classroom. Another thing that we're really, that we're really proud of is on Saturday, we post a wellness activity that's just available for students and families who might be in kind of a rut and thinking like, oh, in COVID times, we're all feeling kind of like, we're not really sure what we should do with our time. And so it's just some ideas about different things that are good for our mind and our body and our souls. So we're really excited about that. What you're seeing now is an example of one of our newsletters. This goes out weekly in our WAG on Sunday nights to families. Sometimes we will talk a little bit more in depth about our programs, what, what's going on or how to join. We'll give different mental health tips in it. We'll talk about different ways to contact us, ways to reach out. We're just always looking for new ways to get students involved and let them know that they're not going at this alone. As always, our students and parents can reach out for support with Google Classroom. We've had lots of appointments with students, giving them checklists to help keep them organized and also to just work through some of the kinks of how do you turn in an assignment or to help parents kind of better understand the platform. And then this is our logo for our mental health campaign that we launched this fall. And we have lots of great ideas for it. And if all of our students were face to face every day, I think it would be even bigger. But we're really, really proud of it. And it's an initiative that we're calling Be The One. And what that stands for is observe, nurture and encourage. And so it's really a call to advocacy for our students, self-advocacy, as well as to be a good advocate to their peers. We go into the classroom once a month and talk about important mental health topics. So we've talked about okay to say, which is a bullying reporting, a way for students to report on bullying. We've talked about be the one, we've talked about COVID isolation. Officer Naw came in and talked about internet safety. And coming up next month, we're going to be doing a mental health fire drill, which we think is really important. We talk all the time about how many times a year do we do fire drills in our buildings with our kids? And how many times does a school actually catch on fire? And so for us, the mental health fire drill is about making sure that our students are prepared to deal with mental health crisis in themselves or a friend or a family member and how to act on that. And so we're really, really excited about all of this. And then my, the thing that I'm most, I think, excited about in terms of social emotional support is actually, I'm going to move my camera. I don't know if you can see it, but there is Ms. Olive. And so if you haven't heard yet, our district was so lucky to be awarded some tribal 2% grant that allowed us to establish a social emotional therapy dog pack. So we have four dogs in our district and we're so lucky, I'm so lucky to be hosting along with my husband Olive, who gets to come to school with us every day. And she's here to just boost everybody's spirits. She meets with students one-on-one, she goes into classrooms before kids start testing just to kind of reduce their anxiety. And there is no greater thing than walking through the hallways and hearing how many people just say, Ollie, because they're just so absolutely thrilled to have her here. We're just really excited about all the different things that we have to offer. And we're always checking in with our kids to see what else we can do. So there's not, we tell them all the time, there's not any idea we won't consider. We're just looking for ways to connect because as we all know, we're venturing into an age where it's not as easy to connect with kids.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Courtney. And you can see that was an example of all the amazing things that are happening at Mount Pleasant Middle School. We have equally amazing things happening at all of our elementary schools and at Mount Pleasant High School. And here's a list of some of those activities as well. So I will stop sharing my presentation now at this point. Joyce, Diane and Courtney and myself, Linda and Ginger, we're all here to answer any questions that you all might have about our return to school plans.
I just want to start by saying thank you to Courtney for all the things you are offering at the middle school. It's been really fantastic to see you developing and it's just been such a highlight. And so just, you know, great job and thank the whole team for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a wonderful team.
Jennifer, I have a question about the COVID testing or I'm sorry, the vaccine.
Yeah.
What about our, our substitutes?
I know we. Is included. So we have substitute teachers that have reached out. What you have to bring to the vaccine clinic is, you know, ID, insurance card and proof of employment. And we have a letter that they can take with them that states that their role in our district is a substitute teacher.
Okay, so that was the letter you talked about through, and it was for PCMI.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So, so we've tried to be very broad in our definition of who is a part of our district. So we were directed by M D to include student teachers. But certainly we all know that substitute teachers are a critical part of our infrastructure, our food service employees, G R B S, everyone that adds to the school day is included in that. So.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Jen, could you talk a little bit about the percentage of the attendance with the two-way communications? Is the state looking at on a monthly basis? Or are they going to make an aggregate at the end of the year to make the determination whether we hit our target? And what would that target be for the state as compared to what our school district target is?
Yeah, and I honestly do not know the answer to that question, Tim. My understanding is that there will be some collection of data. I think that will happen at the end of the school year. But I also think that they are doing periodic checks to make sure that that information is uploaded to our transparency and reporting page. And like they check with, and to make sure our budget information is there and all those kinds of things. I'm not aware of a specific target yet, but I, it wouldn't be uncommon, I don't think, to learn of a target, you know, in April or May that we should have been meeting all along. So yeah, I can ask for more information on that, but I think we're just doing the best that we can to complete the monthly reports, to maintain that, to understand the definition of two-way communication. As I've stated many times, not everything counts as two-way communication. So our teachers have really done an excellent job of figuring that out, figuring out the system. Joe Judge does an amazing job of pulling that information out of the system. But because it is in Power School that then gets reported to MSDS, it goes to the state. I'm guessing there will be some information loop at some point, but I don't know the details up there today.
Do we communicate that information back to the student? So does a student know what their percentage of attendance is?
We talk about with, we talk about with the students, ways that they are counted to be in attendance. There's attendance activities that they do every day. But I don't know that we specifically talk about their two-way communication percentage. I don't know, that might be a little bit too abstract. I don't know, Courtney, if you want to share conversations you have with students about attendance and what it means?
Yeah, we do talk a little bit about, you know, a lot of times students think that attendance means I turned in my assignment. And so there are a lot of conversations that we're having about, you know, there being two sort of different components. And I know for those of us that live in the school world, we know about attendance in terms of, you know, butt in the seat. And then we have, you know, we look at like truancy or something like that. We look at also, you can be academically truant where maybe you're here every day, but you're not doing any of the work. And so we certainly are having a lot of those conversations. you're here every day, but you're not doing any of the work. And so we certainly are having a lot of those conversations with families. I know I can speak just for the middle school, my, ourselves. We do, every class has that attendance activity that Jen spoke about. And we made sure really early on that that attendance for every class, no matter whether you're taking PE or math or computers, that that attendance task is located in the same place in every Google Classroom. So that students aren't having to really search for it. And so I know that, you know, it's, our teachers have taken a lot of time to teach where to find that. We put out things in our newsletter about where to find that. It's something that we make sure that we go through with all of our families.
Thank you.
I've got some questions regarding our testing data, the NWEA. And some of those questions, I'm not sure Joyce, you'll be able to answer. And maybe that's a follow-up for the next time you can join us. But my biggest question was how does this year, so the data was from September, if I understand correctly, compares to prior years? And I was hoping we could see that comparison maybe at some time. Maybe you can tell us briefly what you, you know, what you can tell of us without numbers, but enough to see the graphs.
I can speak to that just real briefly for pollen. I think because the the norm score changed a little bit and lowered, we didn't see probably as big a drop in scores that we thought maybe that we would. As a matter of fact, ours stayed pretty consistent. I really feel like it's hard to get a trend going one way or another with just that one data point. But I think that we're in the process right now of testing our students and I think we'll get a better picture in the next couple of weeks. We're Elementary, Vowels, Pollin, and Gannett are doing data meetings on that Professional Development Day, February 8th. So we'll be looking at grade level data with our teachers and determining, you know, what our next steps are.
One of, thank you Diane. And one of the questions, the reasons I was asking is if we can catch things now rather than keep waiting basically for the end of the year. Because now is right the time where we can try to have some of these interventions.
One of the things too, that we're, that we're speaking of interventions that were is a little bit of a tripwire for us is that because of COVID and trying to keep with our classroom cohorts and not mixed kids, what we usually do is take the data and as we drill down to see the concepts and things, foundational skills or what kids need and deliver those interventions, we use all of our teachers, we use paraprofessionals, and we have an intervention 30-minute time that we can mix kids up based on their needs. And right now, teachers are having to look at the interventions needed and delivering those to all the students in their classroom. So which they could do when they were doing online, they just pulled small groups based on what those kids needed. When you have them all back face to face, you can still do it. It's just not as consistent a schedule.
Diane, can you describe the process that typically happens when you look at data meetings and how you do do exactly what Welean's talking about, where you make adjustments mid-year for supports for students?
Great. So like when you get a typical grade level report back, it really looks at the students below the 21st percentile, those low, low kids, the low average kids. Like Joyce talked about, the 40th percent to the 60th percent, those on grade level average, and then the high and the above. So you can actually take the MAP report or the grade level report and it breaks it down like for math, the goal performances. So each individual student, you can even run reports based on who doesn't have numbers and operations, who needs help with geometry or measurement and data. You can run reports and it will put kids grade level wise or just even class level wise in groups. And then you can drill down in those particular goal performance areas and see, okay, this student is here, what do they need to get to the next level? So these reports are extremely helpful when we're preparing our next steps for delivering interventions to kids. The 60th percentile is pretty significant. If a student is consistently scoring at the 60th percentile and higher, we know that they're on track to pass the M step. If they're not, we're intervening and we're, even though the 40th percentile is grade level, it doesn't always, if they're that low, we know they're really not on track to pace, pass that M step.
I'm really glad Diane that you brought it up this way because I really think it's the strength of these tests is to allow an instructor to identify specific areas that are needed. And I think sometimes as, you know, the parent body might not quite realize that, like what we see as a parent is like these massive tests that the kids are taking and not the behind the scene. And so I'm really glad that you brought it up. Thank you.
Yes.
I would just have to agree with Diane that with the change in the RIT scores and with the way that our school year kind of started off and ended, our data is a little bit, it's not very consistent in how we can compare. But I would say that overall, our trends are about the same with the number of students hitting the national norm. Whether it's a couple of points higher or lower, I think we've been pretty consistent along the way. But I'd be happy to put some historical data together. I probably have it already, but I think it's pretty consistent.
I do have a question as well.
Okay.
Whenever.
Sure. I was just gonna, I was just gonna throw in there that although the MAP reports are primary, we're also looking at DIBELS scores, we're looking at chapter tests. So the data that we bring to the table that day is at least three to four pieces of data for that student when we're determining next steps. So I'll throw that in there too. Go ahead, Sheila.
Okay, the NWEA goes up to eighth grade, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my question is, I've had, I'm only bringing this up because I've had parents come and talk to me. What do you do? Are these kids coming into school to take these or are they taking them off premises? And if they're taking them remotely at home, how do you know that somebody isn't helping them?
Right. Joyce, go ahead, Joyce.
Yep. So that's another part of the inconsistencies in the data. It's a miracle that we have some kindergartners that are at a sixth grade plus level. And then you come to find out that there are parents that, oh yeah, I helped them out. I told them how to spell it and I would like to think that there are academic honest people that everybody was academically honest. And maybe some people just don't understand. And it's hard. It is hard to watch your own child struggle with something. And I totally understand. But yes, we do have students that take at home. We've brought students into buildings. The third, fourth, and fifth graders, we ran testing sessions at the high school at the beginning of the year where we brought them in on Wednesdays when there were not students there. And we had our whole third through fifth grade Bantry McGuire team there helping students get set up and tested. But we also accommodated for those students that did not want to come in. And we do have a system, it's called Go Guardian, where as long as the students are on a school device, and sometimes if they're on their own device and signed in and accept the conditions, we can see as teachers what's on the student screen. It doesn't help us with the audio piece of somebody else helping out, but at least we can see what tabs are open on the student screen. And, you know, if they're switching back and forth to something, the snag is not everybody's on a student, uh, school Chromebook or not everybody is logged in and accepts the permissions for us to be able to do that. We also have Google Meets that we use where, you know, students can jump in and ask questions and answer questions or ask questions to teachers. I know teachers are very clear to parents about not providing assistance to students and trying to do the best that they can, but that, you are right, that is a, a part of what we have to think of. And I think that there's a portion, yes, that are not valid because of that. Or we're seeing a higher scores because there might be some help or students are using calculators and they're not supposed to.
Have we had, have we had any testing back for the, the high school yet? I mean, what are those, what is the testing in there? Because that's where I'm really hearing it's, it's pretty severe.
So those, yeah, those students who take NWEA. So, you know, we use NWEA typically to show student growth over time. So there's growth through chapter tests and that sort of thing. So it's a different testing system. It's not a standardized test like NWEA.
Thanks.
I know that with the lower Ls, we're really encouraging parents to bring their kids in and we have processes and procedures and explain to them how we're sanitizing things and keeping kids. We don't fill our labs up. We offer several different times in the AM and the PM. And I would say this time, I'm, as I'm looking at our schedules, that most all parents have agreed to bring their kids in. I think some of the ones, some of the feedback I got from parents that tried it with their kindergarten students before were just like, oh, please just take them this time. You know, because it was difficult for them. And there are certain accommodations and things like that. I mean, when we give the test, teachers, we talk about what the accommodations are and what we can do and what we can't do. And it's really hard to lay those out to individual families on a per child basis. So most, most parents are signing up to bring kids in for this January testing.
I had some more question, NWEA. Mostly, so if, the graphs went by quick. And so I'm glad that I now have them on my board package because I can go back and look. But on my quick glance, it seemed like the one area as a district where we were below the average national rate you provided was four, but mostly five, six, seven grades math. Is that always the case? Is it typical?
So what happens at different grade levels? So kindergarten through second graders take one form of the test and their test has audio and it's geared towards kindergarten through second grade. And then when students are in third grade through fifth grade, excuse me, they transition to a different test.
So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't read it to them. In K2, it will, it will read the test to it. So it's to them. So it's more of a answering the questions. And in the third grade, it gets to be more of a comprehension, not just only auditory comprehension, but reading comprehension. So there is a little dip usually.
Right. And that makes perfect sense. And so the dip is something we see every year?
Yep. And then there's another test from sixth grade to eighth grade. And there, all the tests can adjust and go to different levels. But the, the framing of the question, the language of the question is different based on the age level of the test. So there's a natural dip between second and third grade, fifth grade and sixth grade, always.
But even if we have these changes in, in tests, which makes perfect sense, right, that it becomes that comprehension piece that, well, that's national, right? So everybody gets that. And so the national average goes up as well. And yet, as a district, we go down quite a bit further than that. I mean, it's not huge, but that's the one area where we do seem below.
I did notice that too, in math.
I wonder if we can, you know, I don't know. I'm sure our math teachers are aware of that, but I do wonder if we again, can do anything to address this directly.
I think that, and I can't speak to the four, five, sixes, but I'm pretty sure that this is the case is that we're really good at doing reading interventions and for the most part, we're doing some math interventions. What we probably could, it's just the time in the day. So I definitely think we can look at, yeah.
Yeah. So as you say, that's exactly, exactly why the data conversations are so important that we have at the elementary level so that they can look at and really drill down to what concepts aren't our students getting? How do we need to teach things differently? You know, what can we do? So when they collaborate in their PLC time and look at that data, it really is, it really is important.
I think one of the things too, that we, that we see is that fluency, math fluency with facts. They're just, and, and also in the lower grades, there just isn't a lot of good math interventions. We sent some teachers to the RSD for some math interventions and with the COVID, we kind of discontinued that this, for this year, but there just aren't as many good math interventions. Math fluency is hard for kids at the lower levels, but so, so important for them to have that.
I have one more, but it's my last one, I promise. How about the high level kids? How about like the ones that are really hitting like of the charts? Do we have anything in place to help enrich their curriculum so that we don't have like the complete boredom that we know happens with high achieving students?
Yep. So what happens with the high, well, with all the students? When they have the data level meetings, they're not only targeting interventions for those students that are struggling, but it's across the board. So we're able to group the students either by grade level or by building or by classroom based on their academic strengths or what kind of instruction they're ready for. So we can run a list of a common core standard and say, these are all the kids that are ready for this. And it might be, maybe they're a third grader and they're ready for a sixth grade skill or a fifth grade skill. So we have groups in the elementaries or in, at the middle school, they're taking the advanced classes. Or maybe they're doing something a little bit deeper with some of the, in their core classes. So they are able to be moved along also, given some extra. Yep.
Thank you.
Joyce, it's true that we look at growth in all students and it's from where they are, their starting point and ending point, not as compared to the norm, correct?
Yes. Yep. Each individual student and where they're at. So a student can start out, not every student is, is, every student has their own growth goal for the year. It's not a blanket goal for an entire grade level. Each student is different.
So that's why it gets important too, at that third grade level, that if their year's growth, sometimes you have to make an ambitious growth, more than a year's growth to close up some gaps. And so that's also something we look at. So we meet them where they're at, but sometimes we realize that if they remain at that just with one year's growth. So we, we have Title I programs. We have before school, sometimes it's after school, summer extended day. We use title funds to support kids that need to augment their, their math day or their reading day.
If there aren't other questions at this time, should we move on to the public comment part of the report?
I think so.
Okay. So for any of our community members that are attending this evening, we do just want to make sure, this is something that we've gotten away from at the last couple of meetings, but we do want to make sure that everyone, that you introduce yourself as you're speaking, using your first and last name. And typically we have you state your address so that we know that you're a resident of our district. So if anyone would like to make public comment this evening, please raise your virtual hand and I will call on you. Laura, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My name is Laura Gorley. I live at 615 East Wisconsin. And this is my 34th year of working in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I'd like to begin tonight by saying chiemigwich to my friends, teachers, and mentors. to my friends, teachers and mentors from the Saginaw-Chippewa Sovereign Nation for sharing their wisdom, which has led to an increased joy in my life as I continue to decolonize my mind, my body and my spirit from the dehumanizing ideology of white supremacy culture. I know that I'm living and working in the traditional homelands of the Anishinaabe people, the people, the council of the Three Fires. It's important for me to acknowledge the land that I walk on, to remind myself and my community that I, as a person who has benefited from unearned privilege, have an ongoing responsibility to do what I can to heal historical wrongs and broken treaties. May I walk in a good way and may I be a good ancestor. I, I can't let this moment go by without saying that 30 years ago, Nancy Nagler, who was a Board of Education member, she was a trustee, and it was her vision to have the Peacemaking Awards. And Nancy lives in Minnesota now, but I will be in touch with her and let her know that this beautiful tradition goes on. Thank you Nancy for that vision. Last January, I was appointed to the Isabella County Human Rights Committee as a representative from Mount Pleasant Public Schools. And so I come to you tonight as a citizen, as a mother, as a community member, as an educator, and as a Human Rights Committee member who would like to recognize that the public schools play a critical role in helping to dismantle the systemic inequalities of our institutions. And we recognize that this means being intentional in terms of developing racial literacy and cultural competencies. You may or may not be aware, this group of people here, this board, that the Isabella County Human Rights Committee conducted a study years back which examined the nature and extent of acts of discrimination, microaggressions against Native Americans in Isabella County. And that full report is available on our webpage. We so look forward to hearing about your plans for bringing racial literacy, cultural competency into the curriculum of K-12 students. Schools have the ultimate responsibility to teach history that is accurate, using primary sources where possible and inclusive of all stories, to correct a system that has a history of over-representing Eurocentric and colonial-centric viewpoints. And in addition, the Human Rights Committee looks forward to hearing about how your recruiting, hiring and retention policies will, will reflect your commitment to justice, inclusion and empowerment. And given our geographic location and historical relationship with Saginaw-Chippewa Sovereign Nation, it's our hope that the demographics of the teaching staff would reflect this reality. Children are empowered when they have teachers who look like them. And the Isabella Human Rights Committee is super happy to be of service to the Mount Pleasant Public Schools as we all navigate this very important moment in history. Thank you so much for your work on this board. It's not easy. There are so many, so many textured levels. And we've got our work cut out for us. And here we are to work together. Thank you for being great teammates.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, my sister.
Is there anyone else from the community that would like to make a comment this evening? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Melissa, are you there?
Bonjour, I'm here.
Go ahead, thank you.
Wabzi kwai djenakas, nami doram saginaw chippewa kin donjaba. My name is Melissa Isaac and I, can I email you my address in this virtual world? All right, big whatch. There's a couple of things. First of all, I want to say chimigwetch to Laura Gorley for that very powerful acknowledgement and for being a longtime ally. I know she's worked many years and been very relentless in the work and I appreciate that. It was nice to hear. There are a couple of things and I'm sorry, I just can't help myself. Some input that I want to give on a few of the things that you talked about tonight. And the first is the social studies standards. I serve as the gigido kwai or the chairperson for the Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Directors, which is all of the tribal education directors from the 12 federally recognized tribes in Michigan. We come together and we do work. And when the social studies standards were first being updated, that first round, if anybody is familiar with how that went, I was appointed as the single person to go in and give our input from an Anishinaabe perspective. On the second and final round, we mobilized, got organized and ensured that there was representation in all subject areas or most subject areas of history, civics, econ and so forth. I served on the Bias Review Committee for the Social Studies Standards Update. So I appreciate and want to say meegwetch to Sheila for asking about curriculum review, not just in social studies, but in all of the other areas as well. Tomorrow, the tribal education directors have their quarterly virtual meeting and we will be reviewing a social studies resource guide that we are putting together, specific to the updated social studies standards and specific to Anishinaabe history embedded by all of us in every area, K-12. And I can send the Zoom link if anybody wants to drop in and join us from the board. We would be more than happy to have you. That section is tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So, you know, we'd like to see you drop in. It's pretty laid back. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the, going back to the NWEA scores. If you look at the, the Native American scores, they're the highest underperformers in the district from what I could see very quickly. This is a historical national trend. This isn't just specific to Mount Pleasant Public Schools. This is a pandemic induced, although it remains to be seen if it will exacerbate this issue. It isn't a change in RIT scores. This is, if, if we look back historically at our data, I'm sure that's the story that it's going to tell. This is going to require us to engage in difficult, and by difficult, I don't mean uncomfortable, but very complex discussions on what we can do about this because it's a problem. So I'm very thankful for our newfound, not newfound, but the, the relationship that we've strengthened throughout the years to be able to find what those answers are. I don't know what the answer is. And I know people have ideas and we won't know until we bring those things together to see, to see what we can do. The third thing that I wanted to mention, just overall, that there are studies out of, new studies out of Oakland University. Actually, don't quote me on that. Strike that from the record, Jen. I'm just kidding. I think it's Oakland that showed a COVID trend across the nation in NWEA where the ELA scores remain the same or they increase. And math across the nation is, is reducing. This doesn't explain data specific to Mount Pleasant versus the national norm, but it's not out of the ordinary because that's the trend right now, but it does give it some context. And I think those are the three things that I wanted to mention. That was shorter than I thought. So anyway, meegwetch for all the work that you all do and for the very enriching conversation that everybody has had tonight. I appreciate it and that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any other, excuse me, is there any other member of the public that's with us this evening that would like to make comment? Amy, I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, Jen, my question goes to you real quick. Was that considered a public comment for the Extended COVID Learning Plan? Do we now have to go into any other general public comment? I know in the past, that's-
Yeah, I mean, we probably, I, I think with, with the requirements now, we probably have to do, yes, the answer to your question, that was comment for the return to school plan. And now we have to offer another section of public comment for any agenda or non-agenda item.
Okay, so I'll do that now. If there is any public comment for any agenda or non-agenda item, please raise your virtual hand and Jen can call on you. Not seeing any and having the opportunity before, I'll move on now to the next session, section, which is Board of Education discussion. Does any board member have anything that they want to share or discuss with the rest of the board?
I would just like to thank both Stephanie and Courtney. Your presentations were great today. I learned a lot. Joyce, thank you Diane. It's always a very challenging, all that data. There are very good reports tonight and thank you for all of that work and thank you for the work that you guys do. It means a lot. So keep working. It's great. Thank you.
Absolutely. There were a lot of great conversation and I think we all kind of missed being able to get together for the traditional peacemaker ceremony. I'm happy that that still went represented. And I'm excited to see the, the nominations come in over the next couple of months for teachers to nominate students. I think it's so important in the district and it's something that sets us apart. And so I'm really happy to see that that's continually to, to move forward. Is there anything else? Okay, that being said, I call this board meeting adjourned.
Amy, just real fast, we're, the board is going to go into a closed session to discuss negotiations. So we do need to have a vote, a motion and a vote and all that to be able to go into closed session.
That's right. Okay, so-
We go into closed session.
I'll second it.
Perfect. All right, Courtney.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pango?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes.
Just a quick clarification. Courtney's motion is to go into closed session for negotiations update. We have to publicly state what the intent of the closed session is.
Okay, so for the negotiation update. And everybody has the link through the separate Zoom session to do stuff. Then nothing further. I can call this adjourned.
Technically, we will, we're going into closed session. The public will know that we will have to go back into open session to adjourn the meeting after our closed session, but there will no longer be anything discussed that the public can take part in. So we can't really go adjourned until after our closed session.
Okay.
So we're closing this meeting. We're going into our closed session meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, see you there. Thank you.